This is a two-part forum for those watching on QCTV or via online. We just finished a wonderful and informative forum for Ramsey City Mayor candidates and city council member at large. We are now moving on to the second segment of City of Ramsey City Forum. The segment is for city council members for wards one, three, and four. You can find out which ward you live in by going to the Minnesota Secretary of State's website. My name is Sarah Berg McConville of the League of Women Voters of Anoka Blaine in Coon Rapids. I'm a resident Champlin and so have no conflicts in moderating this forum as I cannot vote for these candidates. All candidates for these races were invited to participate in the forum and are here. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does very much want you all to vote in all elections and hopes to help everyone feel more informed with their vote by putting on this in all our candidate forums. We will start with Ward one candidates Nadine Heinrich and Jill Johns. We will again begin with three questions that all candidates received in advance of the forum. These will be followed by audience questions. Candidates will alternate who answers each question first, and one minute will be allowed to each candidate for each question. We will allow you to finish your statements for each of those questions. Again, please listen respectfully and hold all applause until the end of the forum. The first question, and we'll start with Nadine. Nadine Heinrich, please describe your background and community involvement.
Hi, thank you all for being here and those of you turning in at home, I appreciate your time as well. Special thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on tonight's forum. It's important that our residents are informed and have an opportunity to hear from candidates. I have an experience-based perspective for working with a variety of people and connecting them to community. I have a bachelor's degree in early childhood education and was recognized as a teacher of excellence for my positive witness in a school community and teaching effectiveness. I have specialized in teaching children with autism as well as training staff and caregivers. I am a certified brain injury specialist and have worked in healthcare for eight years. I was born, raised, and have lived in Anoka County for my entire life. This community is home. Growing up here has allowed me many opportunities to volunteer with a number of organizations serving residents, including food shelves, kids' schools, Free Bikes for Kids, Adopt a Highway, and various roles as a member of North Gate Church here in Ramsey. Another way I'd like to serve my community is representing you all at City Hall.
Thank you. And Jill Johns, the same question back to you. Please describe your background and community involvement.
Great, thank you Sarah, and thank you to the League for hosting this forum. It's a great community service that you guys provide. I'm council member Jill Johns. I'm running for Ramsey City Council in Ward one, which is the northeast portion of the city. I've worked in the medical industry for over 30 years. Most of those years were in compliance and ethics. I've lived in Ramsey for 26 years with my husband Jeff and our children Dan and Lauren. Since moving to Ramsey in 1992, I've served on a whole variety of different community and civic boards because I really believe in giving back to the community. And it's always been important and it's always something I've tried to strive to teach my children as well. So over the years, I've been on the boards for Ramsey Youth Athletic Association, Northern Light Soccer. I was also part of the transition team when Anoka and Ramsey joined together their athletic associations. Youth First, five years on Anoka County Fire Protection Board, four years on Ramsey's Public Works Committee, and 16 years on Ramsey's Park and Recreation Committee. So I look forward to answering your questions and thank you for attending today.
Thank you Jill. The second question will go to you first. Jill Johns, what are your qualifications for serving as Ramsey City Council and why are you seeking office?
Well, as I just stated, I've served Ramsey in a whole variety of different ways over the years. Prior to working on city council, I had spent 16 years as chair of the Park and Recreation Commission. And there was a strong focus with that with community engagement and strategic and long-term planning. So one thing you have to learn if you're going to work in these seats is how to be patient. And so, working through that process, I think it was a nice springboard into sitting on council as well, just because you've got inroads into the community with the contacts that you've made. It's just invaluable experience that isn't duplicated in any other kind of volunteer activity that you can do. So I'm very grateful that I had that experience prior to stepping onto council. I think it makes a huge difference. As to why I'm running, strategic plans are very important to me and we have a long ways to go and we're not done yet.
Okay, thank you Jill. And then same question to you Nadine Heinrich. What are your qualifications for serving as Ramsey City Council and why are you seeking office?
Thank you. My education and work experience have prepared me to serve our Ramsey community as a council member. These experiences have allowed my communication and leadership skills to thrive. Owning a small business, I understand the need to make wise financial decisions. I have the ability to work with a wide range of individuals while still working towards common goals. I'm not afraid to stand up for what I know is right and fair for all. I'm a concerned citizen at the end of the day and want to keep Ramsey a fiscally responsible community, one in which funds priorities first. Being a mom, I am passionate about our parks and recreation and want to ensure proper and timely maintenance of our parks and playgrounds with safety being a top priority. As a council member, I will work to ensure our roads are properly funded. Our community is safe and our residents' values are properly represented.
Thank you. Nadine, this question goes to you first. What are your short and long-term goals for the city of Ramsey?
In the short term, I'd like to see two things. Number one, Ford Brook Park in Ward one updated to safety standards. I know Joy, Ryan, and Nicole, I've met outdoor knocking and they've reached out to me and the neighborhood care deeply about that park. And I'd like to be the council member that gets the job done. It saddens me that Joy went to great lengths approaching city staff to no avail and I think that needs to change. Number two, oppose the pedestrian walk bridge. I've frequently gone outdoor knocking and I've yet to meet a single resident that supports that project, yet my opponent supports the bridge to nowhere. My long-term goals for Ramsey are twofold. First, repair our roads. For example, 167th and 157th in Ward one are in rough shape. They're high-traffic roads, there's businesses, there's residential. Maintaining our roads with the current budget is a priority. There should be no need to introduce franchise fees or raise taxes to fund our roads. Secondly, I will work to keep Ramsey a fiscally responsible community for you, the taxpayer.
Okay, thank you. And then Jill Johns, same question back to you. What are your short and long-term goals for the city of Ramsey?
You know, in chatting with people across the city, there's lots of goals and there's lots of things that we have on our plate to tackle. But for me, and I think the things that are pertinent to the ward are first and foremost, improve the image of Highway 47. It's a gateway into our community and it's something that we really need to be proud of when you come in here. And then, secondly, it's a, that gateway also sort of helps enhance the property value and then working our way up to the node at 167th and 47, we need to enhance that whole corridor to bring in the businesses and the services and the things that we want to try and improve that node as well. So Highway 47 is a priority for me. Trails, we do need safe roads and safe trails across the city and that is lacking up in Ward one and we need to do something about that.
Okay, thank you Jill. Jill, this question will go to you first from the audience. What's your stand on low-income affordable housing for Ramsey?
Well, I think a lot of that has been concentrated, not concentrated, but it is in the core and we've reached our capacity on where we're going to go with low-income housing or subsidized housing. It's not always necessarily low income, it's just there may be different levels of subsidization that the various builders have. So I think we've reached our threshold on where we have to be with that. We've reached the capacity. Now it's time, and we're starting to see that more with our senior housing development that's going in currently, other market rate apartments that have gone in. So there is a variety. The other half of that equation too is just general housing out there. And people have to recognize that affordable, it starts at, you know, $150,000, $160,000. So that's a big chunk of money. So when you talk about affordable housing, you're not talking about anything that's falling apart.
Okay, thank you Jill. And then Nadine, same question to you. What's your stand on low-income affordable housing for Ramsey?
Well, I think that every community needs a good variety of low-income housing. We need to take care of our people and offer a variety of housing options. I do think that we have represented that in our community and it's time to focus on single-family homes and the businesses in the core. I also think that it's important to focus on what the residents want. And when I've been outdoor knocking, they've told me many times that they are tired of the apartments going up and that they want more residential homes and businesses. So that would be my focus as a council member.
Okay, thank you Nadine. This question is going to you first. Nadine Heinrich, what are your ideas to increase city revenues and to decrease city expenses?
Well, I think, I think it's complex. We need to look at our budget and see where there can be changes made. I know for one example, I've recently found out that the city has funded yoga and meditation class. I think that's, that's great, it's a great idea, but when 0.2% of the population actually utilize those programs, that money can be shifted elsewhere. And so, we need to get to going through line item, what we need to do to shift money to better support our community and decrease the current expenses and increase revenue in the city by drawing in businesses, looking at those regulations, and making it a welcoming community for businesses and families.
Thank you. And Jill Johns, same question to you. Your ideas to increase city revenue and decrease city expenses?
Well, increasing revenue will hopefully sort of mitigate the necessity for decreasing. We're in a growth mode in Ramsey. We're not a stagnant, fully built-out city, so we're going to have to make some investments. And in order to do that, we need to start building that base of businesses that are here. And I think we have a great start with that with the business parks that are going in, as was mentioned by earlier candidates. Those things are filling up before they can even get the next one built. And they're snapping them up and there's high demand out there. So I think that that is going to be one of the areas where we're going to be able to build that revenue. Additionally, people are building. Housing projects have been popping all over the place. So we are kind of a bedroom community, but hopefully with that additional housing, with those additional businesses, and we have space for more business. On the other side of 10, there's a lot of opportunity there as well.
Okay, thank you. Jill Johns, question to you first. What is your leadership style and how will you resolve issues if council members disagree?
Oh, my style is definitely collaborative. I like to talk things out. I want to hear all sides of the equation and weigh all of that in my own mind before I make a decision. I've always been that way, always will. People think I'm very gray, I'm not black and white enough, but that's because I'm listening. I want to hear what people have to say. And that's extremely important to me and to be a consensus builder.
Okay, thank you. And Nadine Heinrich, same question to you. What is your leadership style and how will you resolve issues if council members disagree?
I've had a lot of experience working with a variety of people. People that haven't wanted change and I have to work with them and elicit change in their life. That's one of the things I did as a brain injury specialist and it's one of the things that I've done teaching. So I think I bring a unique set of qualifications to that. I like to hear both sides of the issue, but yet I'm not afraid to stand up and make a decision when the time comes and make tough choices in some cases. But at the end of the day, I want to listen to what the residents want and I want to represent them. And I'll work to resolve issues by listening to both parties.
Okay, thank you Nadine. Nadine Heinrich, question to you. Please explain your view on public transportation and do you think we need more or less of public transportation in Ramsey?
Thank you. I think Ramsey has a good variety of public transportation right now. There's bus line, there's train, there's rail. And so, for me, that would not be a priority for our city right now to expand that.
Okay, thank you. Jill Johns, same question to you. Explain your view on public transportation. Does Ramsey need more or less?
I think we're pretty good right now. I'm a little excited because I, my company is actually moving downtown and I'm going to get to take the train for the first time. So that's going to be something that I'm looking forward to doing and get out of the traffic of 169 that I've been going through horrifically all summer long. But as far as Ramsey is concerned, you know, at this point, we're, we're pretty concise. I think we need to focus our energies more on multimodal things where we, the bike trails and safer streets, that kind of thing. Because that seems to be where we can get people off of our roads a little bit. If my kids could have had the opportunity to take a trail and get to their ballparks or whatever so that I didn't have to drive them everywhere, we'd have more, less crisscrossing traffic going. If I could have taken a bike to the grocery store to just pick up that, you know, one thing I needed, it would be nice. So buses and that kind of thing probably aren't as necessity, but we do need to improve the trail system.
Okay, thank you. And Jill, this question will go to you first. This is an audience question. Do you support allowing supermarkets? It specifically says Aldi's to build in the core, which I'm sure you all know what that means, but center of Ramsey, I think. I've seen it a couple times, so.
We actually had a case come before us on this and I think it's still in the works. We aren't opposed to it, but there are certain characteristics that we're looking for along our street front and along Sunwood Boulevard. And so we want to try and maintain that. If we can make it work on the property, it would be great. The other thing though that we do want to be cautious of is will this undermine or in some way take away from Coburn's that has been there for a number of years? And we certainly don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face in something like that. So if we can find a place that makes sense in the core, absolutely, we need, you know, more shopping opportunities and don't oppose that. Just want to make sure that we're very conscientious of where we put things and what they look like in the core.
Okay, thank you Jill. Nadine Heinrich, same question to you. Do you support, do you support allowing supermarkets, specifically Aldi's, to build in the core?
I am a supporter of welcoming Aldi into our community. Council members, part of our job is to promote the city as a welcoming community to businesses. I think that creating healthy competition in our city is important and Aldi would do that. I still think Coburn's would be there, just like when you go over to Cub. Cub is right next to Walmart in Coon Rapids there. So you can have successful businesses in the same area and do well. And it's what residents want. And I've said from the beginning of my campaign, I will ask questions, weigh input, listen to residents, and seek their desires for the city and represent them. And that is one that has come outdoor knocking.
Okay, thank you Nadine. Back to you again. Nadine Heinrich, what is your plan to pay for road improvements in Ramsey?
Well, I think that our roads definitely need to be funded, like we've said. It's, it's very complex. I don't feel like everything has been done that could have been done to fund our roads already. Money could have been set aside for a while. Now I feel like we're playing a catch-up game. I would like to avoid franchise fees. I want to avoid raising people's taxes. So I think it comes down to, once again, looking at that budget and finding out where we can make room to fund the roads.
Okay, thank you Nadine. And Jill Johns, question, same to you. What is your plan to pay for road improvements in Ramsey?
Well, we currently have a process in place with special assessments. And that was pretty much what people said that they wanted. You only have a handful of ways that you can fund roads legally. You can either do assessments, you can do franchise fees, or you can do it in your tax base. So the amount of road work that needs to be done, if we were to add double the size of our budget, you know, I don't think people want that either. So we're trying to come up with a systematic plan. And I think what we have in place now is a good one. We're bonding for part of it, people are paying their portion. You're going to pay for roads no matter what. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. It's going to come out of your taxes one way or shape or form. So we need to find the best way that takes the smallest bite out of your, out of your pocket. And we're looking at that. We've done it one way, we're going to reassess, see if that's still the way we want to continue or if we look for alternatives.
Okay, thank you Jill. Jill Johns, this question will be to you first. What commissions have you been a part of in the Ramsey community or what type of volunteering have you done?
Well, commissions, I spent 16 years or 18 years, something like that, on Ramsey's Park and Rec Commission. I was its chair for a number of years. I've also been on the Public Works Committee, the Anoka County Fire Protection, which is our emergency management for the county. Ramsey Youth Athletic Association, Anoka County. I did a lot of things initially when I moved here that were centered around my children. So it was a lot of boards and commissions with those and managing teams, that kind of thing. But what I really, you know, I think I said this earlier, is those kinds of commission works really lay a groundwork for you in understanding just sort of how processes work. It's a big learning curve to get over and learn those processes. So having that experience coming in, you don't have to go through the learning curve and you could just step right in and be impactful. And, you know, that's what I'm hoping to do.
Okay, thank you Nadine. And then, oh, I'm sorry Jill, excuse me, I'm thinking ahead. Nadine Heinrich, same question to you. What commissions have you been a part of in the Ramsey community or what type of volunteering have you done?
I haven't been involved in planning commissions, although I don't see that as a negative. I see it as an opportunity for growth. I too am a lifelong learner and I'm not afraid of a challenge. Since talking with residents and finding out about city government more, I've learned a lot and I have a lot to learn. But I'm not afraid of hard work. And anybody in our community, if you are a resident, I would encourage you to get involved. All it takes is somebody stepping up and wanting to make a difference in our community. And I think that's what many of us are, why we get into this. We want to make a difference for our children. We want to set an example for them. We have four children and I want to show them that all it takes is stepping up. So that's what I'm here to do.
Okay, thank you. This will be the last question before closing statements. Nadine, you are first. What are your thoughts on partnering with private companies to accomplish road repairs?
Well, that's a unique idea. And I think that we can look at all different ideas and weigh them and see what is going to keep Ramsey residents' taxes low. So if that means talking to specific developers or private companies to see if they can work with us and we can make some deals that would benefit the community as a whole, then that's an option to weigh.
Okay, thank you. And Jill Johns, same question to you. What are your thoughts on partnering with private companies to accomplish road repairs in Ramsey?
That's a really good question. I guess the first thing that comes to my mind is we kind of do that already, in that we assess when we go through and are doing road repairs that goes in front of a business or something that, you know, there's sort of a contribution that they're having to make as part of their special assessment. So in a sense, we already are doing that. In addition, when we are prepping for public services to go through or roads to make connections where housing or businesses are going to go, we share that with the developer. So there is sort of a cost-share mechanism already in place. So whether it's a partnership, you know, per se, to do something that isn't fronting their road, I don't know that if somebody wants to come forward and volunteer, they're welcome to, but, but in a sense, we're already doing that in a lot of the ways that we're structuring our road payments as it is.
Okay, thank you Jill. And now for the closing statements. Jill Johns, you will be the first to give your one-minute closing statements to your voters.
Great, thank you. I'd like to thank the League for hosting the forum and for everyone in our audience for taking the time to learn more about your candidates. I'd also like to thank Nadine and the other candidates for stepping up and running. I really do think it's important and I appreciate your willingness to serve. I'd also like to thank the residents of Ward one for your past support, for contacting me with questions, bringing me ideas and concerns so that we can act upon them. And I think that we've had a good partnership throughout the years, working together on all kinds of different issues. And I really do think that that input is what makes a difference for, and makes Ramsey a better and stronger community. My commitment is simple. I will listen, I will use all my experience and skills to balance all the complexities of activities and policies, to advocate on your behalf, as well as to create a vision together that we can all be proud of. So I'm asking for your vote in November. It's been my privilege to serve as your city council member for these last five years and I'd be honored to continue. Thank you.
Thank you Jill Johns. And then Nadine Heinrich, your one-minute closing statement for your voters.
Thank you. Along with my husband Dave, we are parents to four children, own a small business, and are actively engaged in our community. Residents in Ward one need a council member that will represent their values. Let me ask you a question. Has my opponent knocked your door in the last six years? I've been door-to-door and they're not sure who she is. Your answer tells you something. Since the beginning of my campaign, I have said I will ask questions, weigh input, listen to residents, and make decisions based on the needs and desires of our Ramsey community. It has been a pleasure to get so, get to know so many of you and your concerns and I hope to represent those. As a council member, I will work diligently on three things. Number one, keeping Ramsey a fiscally responsible community. Number two, funding our roads. And number three, ensuring proper and timely maintenance of our playgrounds with safety being a top priority. Please visit my website, NadineIsForRamsey.com, and I will represent your concerns and desires when you vote November 6th for Nadine Heinrich.
Okay, thank you to both of you. We will move on to Ward three candidates, Mike Olson and Melody Schreier. We will move on to Ward three candidates, Mike Olson and Melody Schreier. And right into the questions, you all candidates were given pre- And right into the questions, you all candidates were given pre-Forum. We'll start with Mike Olson. Please describe your background and community involvement.
Well, I started out in construction in my early twenties. And I was, right after that, I got into telecommunications for about 20 years. Lived in Blaine for a while, and then I've been here about three years. And volunteering, I haven't volunteered in any committees besides with my kids in their schools. I'm a newer resident. But that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And then Melody Shrayak, describe your background and community involvement in Ramsey.
Thank you, Sarah. Well, I grew up in Ramsey, so I'm a longtime resident. I did leave for school, and I came back about 17 years ago with my husband and our two children. I'm very glad to be back in town, be back by family and old friends. Throughout the years, I have been a scout leader, both Boys and Girls Scouts, a youth varsity soccer coach, as well as youngsters, all the way down to five years old. I've been a parent volunteer at all of my children's schools, including several years as Parents League President, running school carnivals, and general volunteering, including a volunteer art teacher when my children were in elementary school. I've been part of an art organization, and part of the local sewing guilds, served as president of those, and started a fiber arts group in Elk River. I'm a lifetime member of the Elk River Auxiliary, Veterans of Foreign Wars, and I've been there since I was age 16. I've been, served as president, treasurer, secretary, and I now serve in district and department positions with that organization as well. I've been on the Charter School Board of Directors, Youth First, Rum River Arts Center Board of Directors, and many other activities throughout the community.
Okay, thank you, Melody. Melody Shrayak, this question goes to you first. What are your qualifications for serving on Ramsey City Council, and why are you seeking office?
Okay, thank you. As many have mentioned earlier tonight, there is kind of a bit of a learning curve getting in the chairs here. And perhaps some of my background may have best suited me for this, but there still was a huge learning curve to me. My degree is in urban planning and environmental design. I've worked and consulted on all levels of government, from city, county, and state. I specialize in comprehensive planning, transportation, and recreation planning. When I moved here, back to Ramsey 17 years ago, I immediately came to the city and volunteered to serve as I stayed home with my children, and asked me where can you best utilize me on one of the boards or commissions. I was honored to be appointed to the Park Commission and served there for 12 years. I feel that in running for council, I felt that there needed to be at the time some non-biased and normal person-type voices on it back then. And currently, I enjoy serving the community. I'm council as a representative on the Highway 10 Coalition and many other boards, and I just look forward to continuing that opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Melody. And then Mike Olson, same question to you. What are your qualifications for serving on Ramsey City Council, and why are you seeking office?
Well, I think my qualifications are real simple. I'm a concerned Ramsey resident. I'm a homeowner, I'm a small business owner. Property taxes have gone up about 30% in the last two years. So I have an issue with that. I have an issue with the fact that the city seems to be pushing out businesses, and being hostile towards them, and they're leaving. I know a guy who is a developer and builder, and he's going to leave Ramsey. He's not even going to do any business here anymore because of the silliness that the city has been doing to him. So he'll be gone. It's just a concerned citizen who would like things to be changed, and like people to be treated with respect, and invite businesses into this community.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Mike Olson, question to you first. What are your short- and long-term goals for the city of Ramsey?
Well, I have to go back to my short-term goals are to stop the bleeding. I mean, the property taxes that have gone up so much in the last two years. I don't see that anything significant has been done with this increase in taxes. So I think that there's extreme fiscal irresponsibility in the community. That's my short-term, and that's pretty significant. The long-term goal, I would say, is the same. Is to keep these taxes down, because people that own homes shouldn't have to be slammed with higher taxes. Think about people that are on a fixed income. My mom's in her 70s, both my neighbors are in their 70s. They're either on a fixed income, or they're, I would say that's just the bottom line, is the fixed income. If your income's not increasing, but your property taxes are going up, how do you explain that? It makes no sense to me. And maybe I'm just a simple guy, but that's the question I'm asking the community.
Okay, thank you, Mike Olson. And Melody Shrayak, same question to you. What are your short- and long-term goals for the city of Ramsey?
Okay, thank you. First and foremost, and when I first came to the city and offered my experience, I just wanted to offer that experience and continue helping the community develop wisely, providing access to amenities by leveraging the various resources that are available, and being mindful to maintain the peaceful and rural feel of Ramsey. I grew up here, my family's here, my parents are here, my friends are here. I don't intend to make any decisions that would be harmful to our community or to the folks that I care about. So, you know, in that aspect, I pride myself on seeing projects from all angles, being open to discussion, and finding common ground when we do have differences. I believe in open and honest transparency, having a collective discussion, and way to manage our decisions and our process, so that we can all come to an understanding and to a common ground in the decisions that we do make for our community. Ultimately, fair decisions, continue working on our transportation, welcoming citizen engagement, which I feel is extremely important, and citizen education, along with processes that we go through in the city. So I'll continue that.
Okay, thank you, Melody. Melody Shrayak, this is an audience question. What's your stand on low-income affordable housing in Ramsey?
Thank you. As many have mentioned, you know, we do have a variety of housing now provided throughout the core area, and I think that was the intent of the core. We have transportation services most readily available along the Highway 10 corridor, as well as light rail and things like that. So it is the most logical area to be putting a variety of housing in people that may not have many transportation options otherwise. When we look at the core development, we are with housing in the overall plan of the core. We're at 80% build-out right now. So as far as housing goes, we are almost done. So we really are kind of at that point where we don't need to do much more, and the businesses will start to come, and the rest of it will start to build out. So as far as being afraid of more housing coming in, I don't think we're going to see a whole lot of mass housing coming in, much more in the core. It seems like a lot right now, but if you look at the whole picture, we had 100%. We're already at 80. There's only 20% left that's going to be coming. I think we're making great headway.
Okay, thank you, Melody. Mike, I'm actually going to have you move a little closer to your mic. People are having a hard time hearing you, I was told.
Sorry about that.
There you go. Can everyone hear now? Yep, okay. Mike, same question, back to you. What's your stand on low-income affordable housing for Ramsey?
Well, I believe we have enough affordable housing over in the core. And I know a lot of people that want to move to Ramsey actually want to buy homes and build homes. And the transportation, I think, is, it's all set up, and it's there. I don't see any point in putting any more money towards that. I would find that to be a money pit.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Mike. Mike Olson, question to you first. What are your ideas to increase city revenue and to decrease city expenses?
Well, I think a good way to increase the city revenue is to make it attractive for businesses to come here. And it is, that is one thing. You need to make sure that your community is attractive, and it isn't, doesn't have high regulations, doesn't have permits that are three times higher than your surrounding communities, and that your city inspectors work with these business owners instead of trying to tell them how to run their business. You know, especially people that have been in business for 20, 30 years. You know, we were going to have a McDonald's over here. Where is it? It's gone. They're not coming back. That's sad.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Melody Shrayak, what are your ideas to increase city revenue and to decrease city expenses?
Okay, thank you. It's a very tricky question, and we deal with this all the time. And it's one of the things that council, it's one of those tough decisions that council grapples with. And that's where I believe that we need to have more conversation on that. Everyone needs to understand where we're coming from on those particular items. As far as city revenue, obviously, bringing in businesses, bringing in homes is going to continue to increase our tax base over time. But I think there's a misperception as to how that happens and what we're doing with it. We hear time after time with developers that come in and thank the city for their cooperativeness. I think any misperception, and I don't disagree that over the years there has been some difficulty and some issues with previous possible city employees or city council members over the years. My parents will tell you that, we still argue about that to this day. So, I mean, I know it's there, but I really firmly believe we are in a good, strong position right now. We're doing everything we can to help. And we also are understanding that there are times, such as McDonald's, that it just wasn't the right time for them, they chose to pull out.
Okay, thank you, Melody. Melody, this question is to you first. What is your plan to pay for road improvements in Ramsey?
This is something we all inherited. It's very unfortunate. Our roads over the years, since 60s or 70s, were not built to equal standards. We have road depths in some areas that may be less than an inch thick, and other areas in the same roadway, just feet away, that are six inches deep. So they are not built to last the way they were. They were not maintained properly over the various years. So we've been left with a mess, obviously. Council, just before I came on, had done some research, and based on comments and input, and their research came up with the assessment process. It's working okay. However, we do see people with assessments. We assess residents right now. We've been assessing them anywhere from $2,000 to $8,000 a project. Can you afford $8,000? That's tough. And then, in addition to that, we also are bonding over $1 million a year now, which is going to add $100,000 to our budget every year. It's not the right solution, and we need to all work together to find the right one.
Okay, thank you, Melody. And Mike Olson, same question to you. What is your plan to pay for road improvements in Ramsey?
Well, I know some things about how to fund the road projects. I believe in years past, they had a budget where they actually had a certain amount of money. I believe it was something over $1 million per year for road projects. And that stopped in the last, I don't know if it was five or six years, I believe it was six years. But anyway, the point is, the money was always put in the budget, and boom, now it's gone. And it's been gone, and they're talking about how, we're trying to figure it out. How long's that going to take? I'm just curious. I'm just a concerned citizen. Like I said, I'm not a career politician. I'm just a person that's looking at the situation and wondering how it is that everybody having meetings can't figure anything out. So we'll figure it out, but we're going to ask the right people, and we're going to quit sitting there asking questions for another 10 years.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Mike Olson, question to you first. What is your leadership style, and how will you resolve issues if council members disagree?
Well, we all have opinions about how things are going to be run. That's why there's four seats, and then two at-large seats. So if people disagree, you're going to have a certain amount of votes. You're either going to be four-two, five-one, six-one, whatever it is. I can agree to disagree on certain things, but when you have the facts in front of you, it's difficult for me to look at someone that has the same facts in front of them and try to give me a different answer. Math is math.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Melody Shrayak, same question to you. How would you, what is your style of leadership, and how will you resolve issues if council members disagree?
Thank you. I believe that my style of leadership is empowerment. I really believe in empowering people to come to their own decisions, to understand why they did that, to make decisions based on their opinions and their research. I also believe in collaboration. I think that's extremely important. If we don't talk to each other and don't have that input from each other, whether those opinions are differing slightly or greatly, I think we lose something there. So by having that collaborative discussion with each other, we are able to come to maybe an understanding that maybe none of us even knew existed. And so it's extremely important that we continue to feed each other and have that dialogue, whether it's diverse or not, I think it's important. And sometimes I like that diversity even more than the agreement, because then we have the opportunity to come to an understanding together and come to a solution that we all feel is going to work.
Okay, thank you, Melody. Melody Shrayak, this question is to you first. What are your plans for making Ramsey attractive to retail business that might be considering opening up here in Ramsey?
Thank you. Well, part of it is the rooftops. We were told that right from the beginning. They want to see people here, you can't have a business here if you don't have people to support it. Like I said, we're at a good 80% build-out on what we anticipated in the core area for housing, and we've got other areas of the city that are booming. So that's, of course, going to help. Another big issue that we have is transportation along Highway 10. I sit on the Highway 10 Coalition, which is of Anoka and Coon Rapids and Andover, the county, our county commissioners, as well as state representatives and state staff. And that's something that we all agree on, and we hear from businesses time after time, I can't come here if we can't get our load here. I can't come here if our employees are going to be consistently late, those sorts of things. So we're continually looking at that. So I think transportation is another big issue that we need to continue to work on, the traffic delays and just simple access. So those are our main things. We do have some minor tools that we use as a city, such as TIF, and some small little programs that we do utilize in a couple hundred-dollar benefits that may help smaller businesses.
Okay, thank you, Melody. Mike Olson, same question to you. What are your plans for making Ramsey attractive to retail business that may be considering opening up here?
I'm going to have to go back to making it a little bit easier for businesses to actually open up here, and not giving them such a hard time. And when they are doing business here, and they're trying to close deals, like selling homes, building homes, that you don't tell them, you know, it's going to take another week to close this house, because we found you have two inches of dirt here, and there needs to be four, and we can't do anything else, we're going to have to move it out another week when that person already doesn't have a place to live. There's one. You might want to be a little nicer to the business owners. We need to expand the business district here. And I think it's really, I think it's really been poorly taken care of.
Okay, thank you, Mike Olson. This question is going to go to you first now. Please explain your view on public transportation, and do you think Ramsey needs more or less of public transportation?
I think we have plenty of public transportation. We have buses, we have the light rail, and we have the roads, which are certainly cramped, that's for sure. So public transportation, I don't think, needs any more funding or expansion or anything like that. It's just, I think the roads need to be fixed and widened, make it easier for people that own cars to drive place to place.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And to you, Melody Shrayak, same question. Please explain your view on public transportation, and do you think Ramsey needs more or less of public transportation?
Okay. I started out my career in what is called multimodal transportation, and working with transportation demand management with businesses and communities, particularly in Madison, Wisconsin primarily. But I think that we are in a good position right now in Ramsey, and especially with the advantage of being along Highway 10. We've got multiple opportunities here. As far as mass transportation, I think we are in a good spot right now. I think we are able to kind of switch that focus and look at how that mass transportation connects to everything else. I believe Ramsey has done a good job of looking at how we connect to our surrounding communities. We are still working on doing that with some of our pedestrian bicycle facilities and things like that. That's probably where I see our largest focus should be, aside from, you know, obvious road repairs and things like that. But we have individual motor vehicle access, we have mass transit access. How do we connect, and how do we get people in non-motorized transportation to connect to all of those resources?
Okay, thank you, Melody. This question is now going to go to you first, Melody Shrayak. With the city taxes going up in recent years and a looming road repair crisis, the question is, do you think we should be building parks and bridges? is, do you think we should be building parks and bridges in the core?
Okay. This is one of those things where I think we really need to help everyone to understand where we sit in some of these positions. Our taxes took a jump a couple of years ago because we changed how our HRA funds came into the accounts. That did change how our tax percentage looks. So there wasn't as big of a change, I think, as people think. And if I look back at my property taxes, I, I would say I haven't had more than maybe a $200 increase over the last number of years. It fluctuates, but it's not anything horrendous. And we have to make those tough decisions. Do we provide safety? Do we need another police officer? Are we understaffed with the 500 homes we're building every year? So there's, there's concerns like that. And I think as far as parks and things in the core, they deserve recreation just as much as anybody else. And the city does have something called park districts, where when those places develop, they're, what they're charged or assessed sort of by the city for park and recreation things, stay in the district where that building was built. So it's for them.
Okay. Thank you, Melody. And then same question to you, Mike Olson. City taxes are going up in recent years. Road repairs are coming. Do you believe that parks and bridges should be being built in the core?
I don't think that there should be any focus on the bridge to nowhere. Parks, maybe. I mean, but I think we might want to fix the parks we have in the community already instead of building more parks, because we have parks that are falling apart already. So no, I don't, I don't think that bridges and any of that, that's just a waste of money at this point. You need to put the money where it belongs and fix what we already have. And the streets are very important to be fixed.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. This is the last question before closing statements. Mike, if you received a million dollar grant to use for the city in any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
I think I would go, I would divide it among roads and parks, including trails, but I would divide it among that, and that'd be exactly how I spend it, hands down.
Okay. And Melody, same question to you. Million dollar grant for the city, any way you want. What would you do with it and why?
Well, I'd be very happy. Million dollar grant, wow. There, we have so many needs. And I think we have our, our CIP, which helps us to prioritize where our funding goes. That obviously can help be a guiding document in utilizing those funds. Obviously, we're hitting a crisis with our roads. I think a large portion of it should be spent for that. But we also have a number of maintenance projects throughout the city that are behind, that may need to be done. And so I think we should look at safety items, whether it's a park item, a road item, a trail item, whatever it might be, even a building item, if we've got a sidewalk going or something. Look at those safety items, and then once we've taken care of any crucial safety items, I think with a million dollars, a large pot of that could possibly be put through some roads and help us get caught up here in, in what we're trying to backtrack on right now.
Okay. Thank you, Melody. We're going to now move to the closing statements. Melody Shrayak, you will have, you will be first. Please let the voters know anything else you think they should know about you.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity this evening and those that have taken their time to come this evening and will take their time at home to watch as well. It's very important to be involved in this process, and I really appreciate that people are attuned to that. I believe that we have a friendly community. I believe that we are friendly to businesses. We are trying to work with businesses. We do not go out on a complaint, looking for infractions throughout the city. It's all complaint. Most of it's complaint-based unless someone's coming in for an upgrade or a new permit or something like that. So we don't go out looking for trouble. We're trying to work with everybody, and we do give people many, many opportunities to resolve items that may be not up to code. So I believe that we are a friendly community. We do hear that from, from businesses and developers that are looking at us, and there are those that are continually coming to us and looking to develop here in Ramsey. I really would like to impress upon people to look for the information they seek. It is out there. I am fully open to discussing with anybody. I fully believe in transparency. I, I think that I'm a, a normal, honest person. I am not a politician, and in fact, many times I'm up here uncomfortable. So thank you for your time. I look forward to working with you and have you contacting me so that we can work together. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Mike Olson, one minute for your closing statement to speak to your voters.
Well, thank you, the League of Women Voters, for putting this forum on. I appreciate it very much, and thank you for everyone that came out. I just want to see Ramsey prospering. I just want to see businesses, you know, they should be attracted to this community. This is a beautiful community. People want to live here. This is what, what people were thinking about Blaine about 18 years ago. This is a great place to live, and we shouldn't be pushing businesses out, and this is what I've been hearing, and I got no time to make anything up. This is just what I hear, and it's by business owners. And I think it's, it's tragic. And the thing is, the, the permits shouldn't be as expensive as they are either. In comparison to surrounding cities, they're about three times as much, at least two times as much. And the McDonald's, the McDonald's fiasco, I think that's a sad thing too, because that's one business. People are talking about, should we have Aldi and why not? I like to shop at Aldi. Most people do. They're good deals, and why not have competition? And as a Ramsey citizen, I just, just want to thank you for your time tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Let's give Mike Olson and Melody Shrayak a round of applause. Thank you for running for office. Finally, last but definitely, definitely not least, Ramsey City Council Ward Four candidates Ralph Brower and Debra Musgrove will have their chance to speak to their voters. We will begin again with the same questions all candidates received prior to the forum, and we'll start with Ralph Brower. Ralph, please describe your background and community involvement in Ramsey.
When I look at a candidate for office, I'm really not interested in their resume. I'm more interested in knowing what's in their head rather than what's on paper. And by that, I mean, what compass points do they use when they make decisions? When things are rough, what do they rely on? When things get stormy, what do they rely on? For me, the one compass point my whole life, and most of my friends and people I've worked with will tell you this, has been equality and fairness. I was on the planning commission for 16 years, and I think there wasn't a meeting that went by that I didn't say, is this fair to the people involved? Are we being fair to them? Are we being fair to everybody else in the city? My second was the desire to maintain a level playing field, which is why I got into public service, was awarded Bush Leadership Fellowship for the work that I did in environmental, public health, and other issues. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ralph. Same question to you, Debra Musgrove. Please describe your background and community involvement.
To start, I'd like to say thank you to the League of Women Voters and those of you who've come out this evening. I'd also like to say a special thank you to the residents of Ward Four who came out to support my campaign in the primary election that garnered me the top vote total. I have had wonderful conversations with residents of Ward Four, who are good people, who work hard and deserve to have a city council member who will represent their needs and values. I'm a single parent of two children. I've worked for 29 years in the, as a physical therapy assistant. I've managed my family budget as a single parent and have often had to say no. I have volunteered as an election judge. I've been elected to leadership in my basic political operational unit. I served as a caucus secretary, and I currently am a caucus chair. I attend that now-then Alliance Church, volunteering in their hospitality cafe, and I would like to represent Ward Four in the upcoming election.
Okay. Thank you, Debra. Debra Musgrove, this question to you first. What are your qualifications for serving on Ramsey City Council, and why are you seeking office?
My children and I have called Ramsey home since 2009, so I'm a resident and a taxpayer. I have been active in community initiatives offered by the city of Ramsey, including the rezoning for the old city hall, the Parks Initiative, and the 2040 planning. I've been involved in my community and tried to stay aware of what is going on. I'm also active in my homeowners association, communicating concerns that impact the members of that association. I've run spreadsheets to reflect costs and impact and ask tough questions regarding those plans and increases. I would like to say that, that desire that I have to understand why we're being taxed, why are things happening in our community, has led me to believe, or led me to seek this office, and that is why I'm running for Ramsey City Council.
Okay. Thank you, Debra. And Ralph Brower, same question to you. What are your qualifications for serving on Ramsey City Council, and why are you seeking office?
Well, the main reason I'm seeking office is actually listed on my website or on my website. What it says is, our greatest resource is our people, and our greatest need is to invest in you, and, and that's why I'm running. In terms of qualifications, I think what people want to know is, what have you done for the city? And why did you do it? And so I want to tell you about some of the things that I've been involved with in 16 years, 17, 18 years, I guess it is, in Ramsey. The two values that I've tried to hold on to through all of that is, one is the need to preserve neighborhoods, and second was the need to foster citizen engagement. The two neighborhoods I helped preserve in the fourth ward are the Rivers Bend area, where I was instrumental in killing a plan to put a youth facility on the corner. And then I also created the process in Ramsey that brought about the killing of the data center that Debra was talking about. The process that she was talking about was one that myself and a group of other people created.
Okay. Thank you, Ralph. Ralph Brower, this question is to you first. What are your short and long-term goals for the city of Ramsey?
Well, I've got four of them. I think first that we need to move from citizen engagement to citizen-led decision-making. And that means that we use citizens to help us make better decisions. And we had a process that we, we did, we did it 10 years ago, and if we did it then, I think we can do it now. Second, we need to reduce our dependency on property taxes. Cities across the country are looking at ways to do this, and I think we need to do it too. Third, we need to invest in our people, and I think we need to invest in a business incubator that will allow our citizens who have good ideas to bring them forward. And then fourth, I think we need to enhance two-way communications. That means we need to talk to people, be out among them. I have proposed that we have a Ward Four Advisory Committee made up of people in the fourth ward that would bring ideas to me and to the council.
Thank you, Ralph. And Debra Musgrove, same question to you. What are your short and long-term goals for the city of Ramsey?
My first long-term goal would be to lower taxes by prioritizing government spending for roads, police, and safety with a by-line review of the budget. Residents that I have talked to in Ward Four while campaigning are frustrated with their taxes having been increased, but not seeing a lot of value return in that. In the last eight years, they've increased over 25%, and the current council minutes reflect a concern about not having enough money for road maintenance. But for the city, government roads should be a priority. Second, fair and transport parent, excuse me, development in the core and along Highway 47. Residents are expressing a disdain for the core. They want to be able to see that the development that they've been promised is being done, and they continue to see that things continue to go more towards housing and less towards the business development. Think of businesses like McDonald's, QuickTrip, and Target. Those are all businesses that I think that the community residents want.
Okay. Thank you, Debra. Debra Musgrove, this question to you first. What are your plans for making Ramsey attractive to retail business that may be considering opening up here?
I, I think one of the things that we need to do is to be able to let them know that Ramsey is a friendly business place. So when businesses want to come here, they're attracted because they don't, they're not overburdened with regulation. I think of places that are just down Highway 10 that are growing and developing, they're just on the other side of Ramsey, towards Elk River. There are buildings going up, there are places that are expanding. What is it about Ramsey that makes that not happen in the core? Why is there a lot of focus on the development in the core where funds are being spent here and not necessarily for the whole city? I think some of those things we need to look at and see why and what, what can be done differently to attract businesses here.
Okay. Thank you, Debra. And then same question to you, Ralph Brower. What are your plans for making Ramsey attractive to retail businesses that might be considering coming here?
Well, I think as we all know, the retail game has changed. Retail game is now internet-based, and that's, that's, you know, you're shaking your head. We have in Ramsey a resource that I don't think very many other communities have that is just what internet-based businesses are looking for, and that is right outside the door here, under the railroad tracks, is the high-speed internet connection between the Twin Cities and Fargo. So that's the one thing that we have. We can hook them up to that, and we can give them that, and I don't think very many other communities can. Second thing is, I think we need to recruit more local businesses. I mean, we need to use people, you that are sitting in this room can help us recruit more businesses. And I've even talked about paying a bounty. You find a business, bring it in. Maybe there's a way that we could give you a reward for that. So I, I think we need to use our people more to recruit businesses.
Okay. Thank you, Ralph. Ralph Brower, you are going to have this first question, or this question first. What are your plans on expanding Ramsey's tax base?
I think the first thing that we need to look at is broadening our tax base. Right now, I think, you know, it's, we're sort of sitting on a pyramid. You know, Jill, you were nodding. And I, I think what we need to do is, is look for more businesses that are broad-based, and I think we need to bring them into the community. The other thing I need, I think we need to do is, I've talked about having a business incubator for people in our city that are starting businesses, that can start their own business. So we've, we've got people here that can start business. Let's, let's encourage that. Those two, I think, would be the main ones.
Okay. Thank you. Debra Musgrove, Musgrove, same question to you. What are your plans on expanding Ramsey's tax base?
I think one of the things that we need to do to consider expanding Ramsey's tax base is to look at what regulations are in place that deter businesses from wanting to come here. Expanding business, I know, is not easy, but I think that there are businesses that would want to come here, but sometimes they compare other places and other locations, and they're going, I can get a better deal over here. What is it about Ramsey that will make them say, I'm not going to come to Ramsey, I'm going to go to this other location? And go through and look at those regulations and see where we can make changes and make Ramsey a better place to do business.
Okay. Thank you, Debra. Debra Musgrove, this question is for you. It's regarding garbage. What are your thoughts about the number of garbage collectors on the city streets? Should we continue as-is or limit to one or two companies on one, one day a week in each neighborhood, and why?
So this is something that I'm not fully understanding of. I know that in my area, we have one garbage collector that picks up, and because it's a homeowners association, we don't have a choice. So my understanding was is that the city does already limit some government, or I mean, some garbage hauling, just to minimize traffic on the streets. So I'm not sure if people can selectively go in and decide, this is which one I want, or if it's done by an area, so that I would have to look into more.
Okay. Thank you, Debra. Same question to you, Ralph Brower. What are your thoughts about the number of garbage collectors on What are your thoughts about the number of garbage collectors on Ramsey's city streets? Should they continue as-is or limit to one or two companies to one day per week in a neighborhood?
I wouldn't want to limit it to one. I lived in the city, Coon Rapids, before this, that when I lived there, we had only one and it was a problem. They called the shots in terms of collection and everything else. So that alone would discourage me from ever voting for something like that. But I think the bigger question is the whole issue of competition. I mean, if the more companies you have competing, the better deal we get out of it. So I can't see any reason to limit it to one person or one company.
Okay, thank you, Ralph Brower. This question to you first. What is your leadership style and how will you resolve issues if council members disagree?
The guy who wrote the textbook on leadership talked about two kinds of leaders, transformational leaders and transactional leaders. Transformational leaders are people who have a vision for the future. Ronald Reagan was a transformational leader. Transactional leaders are people who make the trains run on time. I guess you might say maybe Bill Clinton was a transactional leader. I'm a transformational leader. I believe in following a vision and that's why I'm involved in this city. In terms of resolving issues, I think the best way to do that is to involve people in the decision-making. 10 years ago, we saw that as a problem and 10 years ago, a group of us brought people together in Ramsey and we created a process to do that because you need a process to bring people together. It's one thing to stand here and say, let's do it, but what you need to have is a process.
Okay, thank you Ralph. Same question to you, Debra. What is your style of leadership? How will you resolve issues if council members disagree?
Well, what I'd like to do is ask tough questions. So I would like to be able to ask questions about a project to say, compared to what? What are our other options? What are the choices that we have when we're looking at a project? At what cost and to whom is the cost? Does it disadvantage the taxpayers? Does it give special benefit to certain groups of people and disadvantage others? And the other thing is, is what is the hard evidence for each one of the options? And then looking at the hard evidence, sometimes that makes it a lot easier to make a decision and sometimes you have to make a decision and some people like it and some people don't, but you have to always look, I think, at the facts and make that decision.
Okay, thank you, Debra. This question is for you first, Debra Musgrove. City taxes are up in recent years and there are road repairs in sight. What are your feelings about building parks and bridges in the core?
I think we need to have government that's prioritized its spending on roads, not parks and other amenities. I think parks are nice, but I think what people forget about parks is that parks cost money to build and they cost money to be maintained. When you're building parks and working on maintaining them over the priority of roads and safety, that, it doesn't work. You're going to be always spending money, nickel-ing and diming out to other places and roads are not going to be fixed and that's what we have now. We have a problem that the priority of government spending is not on roads. We need roads to attract businesses here. We need good roads for people to be able to travel on, to get to work and to go places and it's, government priority needs to be on roads.
Okay, thank you, Debra. Same question back to you, Ralph Brower. City taxes are up, road repairs are needed. What are your feelings about building parks and bridges in the core?
Well, the Planning Commission got together about six months ago and came together and decided the mission for the core was a place that brought the people of Ramsey together. Parks bring people together. Parks bring people to the center of the city. The bridge, that's a whole nother ballgame and what people haven't talked about is the bridge to nowhere isn't a bridge to nowhere, it's a bridge to somewhere. And one of the largest developers in the city owns the land on the other side of that bridge. And I believe if we're going to build that bridge at all, that person ought to contribute to the cost because he's going to benefit from it. But if you had to ask me, would I spend money on the bridge or on more roads? To me, that's a no-brainer. I think we need the roads.
Okay, thank you Ralph. This question to you first and hoping I get this correct, but what are your thoughts on dealing with disparity for minorities in the community?
I think, you know, I started out by saying, one of my prime values is fairness and I think we need to, you know, fairness needs to guide all those decisions. And how that is done within the city, I think the city's doing a pretty good job of it now. And I have not heard in the door-knocking that I've done or the people that I've talked to, that there's any discrimination or anything like that going on in the city. I will tell you that if there is, I will not stand for it.
Okay, thank you Ralph. And same question back to you, Debra Musgrove. What are your thoughts on dealing with disparities for minorities in your community?
I think that those types of issues need to be dealt with on a one-on-one basis or, you know, if there is an issue with that, to be dealt with on an issue-by-issue basis. I have not heard that to be an issue when I've been out door-knocking. I would certainly hope that if people did feel that that was an issue, that they would be, feel comfortable enough to come forward and speak about it. I think Ramsey does have a lot of issues that they need to work on, but I think that's something that the citizens of Ramsey would also be willing to address and work on to make sure that there's fairness.
Okay, thank you, Debra. This is a fun question, a what-if. For Debra Musgrove, if you received a million-dollar grant to use for the city in any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Well, I think roads would be a priority, but there's so much you could do with that money. I think I would have to look at all the ramifications of it and figure out if it would be good. Sometimes you get a lot of money and you do something big with it, but 10 years down the road, that comes back to bite you in the butt. So I would probably go towards roads.
Okay, thank you, Debra. Ralph Brower, same question for you, a million dollars. What would you do with that money and why?
I think the easy thing to say to that is spend it, but, you know, I've written a lot of grants in my time. I think I brought in 15, 20 million dollars with a grant to the state of Minnesota. And the way grants work is, they always are looking for a match. So if we've got a million dollars, what I would do with that is start looking around for places that we could get more money from and use that million dollars as a match. In other words, we have a million, let's get another 50,000 from somebody, let's get another 100,000. Pretty soon, that million becomes 2 million.
Okay, thank you Ralph. This will be the last question before closing statements. Ralph, you get this question first. What commissions have you been on, a part of, in the Ramsey community or what type of volunteering have you done?
Jim Abler, you were sitting, yeah, you still are over there. He reminds me of one of the volunteer things I did. I was on the parent advisory committee for Anoka, Hennepin School District and with Jim's help, we killed a bill that would have cost the school district 10 million dollars. So that's one of the volunteer things I've been doing. Obviously, 16 years on the Planning Commission was a lot of work. I was a little peeved at the guy who said, those of us who served on city commissions sit in a room. Planning Commission, at least I would go out and talk to everybody that was on the agenda and find out what they wanted, find out what the citizens wanted and get involved in that. The last volunteer thing that I didn't even mention when we were starting was I was a youth athletic coach, coached basketball. And my one thing that I always did when I was doing that was I wanted every kid to have equal playing time and that goes back to that value of fairness.
Okay, thank you Ralph. Same question back to you, Debra Musgrove. What commissions have you been a part of in the Ramsey community or what type of volunteering have you done?
So I have volunteered at my church, which is not directly in Ramsey, it's in Now Then. I serve there at the Hospitality Cafe. I've volunteered for my kids' sports activities, including managing spaghetti dinners for swimmers a few times, planned different social events for my children as far as related to their sports as well. And last year, I helped to organize a root beer float sale for my son's school and I am volunteering currently right now for the senior party. Not really commissions, but things that involve getting people together, making money, planning, having fun, and just being a part of leadership in the community.
Thank you, Debra. Okay, Debra Musgrove, you will have a first opportunity to give a one-minute closing statement to your voters.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight. Besides getting out door-knocking and meeting the residents, this is a great way for voters to see the differences between my opponent and I. For those here in the audience and for those at home wondering who you should vote for to represent you in Ward Four, I would say, I'm your candidate. If you want a fiscal conservative, I'm your candidate. If you want a candidate who will respectfully ask tough questions of city government on decisions versus going along with the status quo, then I'm your candidate. If you want a candidate who will prioritize city government on needs versus wants, I'm your candidate. My website is musgrovefour, F-O-R, Ward Four, the number four, dot com. You can find my contact there and I would like to have you contact me and I would look forward to hearing with you and discussing things that are in concern to you. I humbly ask for your support on Election Day, November 6th. Vote Debra Musgrove.
Thank you, Debra. Ralph Brower, you have one minute to speak to your voters.
Well, I want to thank all of you for sitting through two hours tonight of all of this. Thank the League of Women Voters for putting it on and most of all, I want to thank the people of Ramsey whose doors I've been knocking on the last two, three, well, actually the last month, interrupting meals and activities with kids and everything else. It's been a great experience. In terms of the future and where I want to go and what the city's about, I've been sitting here listening to all this tonight. It took me back to my days when I was guiding canoe trips into Boundary Waters. So I'm going to give you the lessons that I learned in the Boundary Waters that apply to what's going on here. The first one is be prepared. I took a trip into the really deep Canadian wilderness and I took along a big first aid kit and when I was taking along, my fellow guide said, you don't need that, that's too much. Three days in, I had a kid put a knife through his hand and we used every bit of that first aid kit. Second lesson is, choose the kid and not the canoe. I was, we were on a portage on a waterfall and I had a kid knock a canoe into the current and he dived in after it to try to rescue it. I grabbed him by the collar and pulled him out of the water and the lesson for that, for the city, is pay attention to the people, not the stuff. So those two.
All right, thank you Ralph. Let's give them both a quick round of applause. Thank you Ralph and Debra for running. And this concludes our two-part programming for City of Ramsey City Mayoral and City Council Forums. League of Women Voters, again, thanks all candidates here today for speaking to voters about issues and for running for office. Thank you, audience members, for listening and participating for the last two hours with great questions for this forum. Thank you to QCTV for partnering to allow us, to allow those who could not make it tonight view the forums. Our democracy depends on citizen involvement. If you are interested in Leagues, please check out our local League site at L W V A B C M N dot org. All women, even men, and young adults over the age of 16 are welcome and encouraged to join. The general election is again Tuesday, November 6th. You can vote at your city offices starting September 21st through November 5th or in person at your precinct polling place, November 6th. You can find information on voting options or check the Precinct Finder to find your polling place in the Minnesota Secretary of State's website. And choosing my sample ballot. Your voice is your vote, please vote. Have a wonderful night. Let's give all the candidates, QCTV, and our audience a round of applause.